And see the red dot?
Yeah, okay.
And the reason I sit close to it is because sometimes that red dot goes out. Yeah, I'll just, no, here, no, you stay here.
You watch.
Yeah, it gets into trouble, a little red flashy, will go out. Does that make sense?
Hi. I know.
Did she call?
I'm sorry.
Did she call?
Anyone?
Did she for anything?
Uh, no. I don't know her. Is that his impression? Deager was supposed to be here and Kevin. So, he's gonna wait a second. I'm still trying to get connected to him.
Kevin won't be here. He called M.O.A. We're talking, talked to her. Or, he has green bin problems or something. She saw Deager in the store Saturday and she said, "I'll see you Monday night," so...
Yeah.
I can shoot her a text and see if she's on her way.
Oh, you're good.
Need thought?
Yeah.
Well, I'll keep trying to connect to him while you do that. Because I can't pull up the next chapter if I'm not...
Do you know who Mark, Dr. Adams? He's, he's probably the, uh, he's out of town, didn't he?
Yep.
How you doing there? Seven o'clock. My tickets are burning.
So, what's, what's that about today?
Deager will not be here.
Who?
Deager. He will not be here. So, we cannot vote on anything, but we can discuss, I suppose. Can we not hear, um, is it Ferraro?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yeah.
All right, how about we need a word, I guess, so we can discuss. Andrew, really, the pledge, how would you care to...
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blessed be your heavenly Father. Thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for this wonderful fall weather we've had. Dear the Lord, be with us. Dear the Lord, let us put our differences aside, our differences of opinion, and make sure that we do your will, Lord. In his precious name, we pray. Amen.
Jonathan, they presented copies of the minutes, but since we don't have court, we'll just save those for next week. Um, next on the agenda is public comments. And Terry Ferraro, can I say that? Okay. Terry, if you want to go ahead and come up, you have fifteen minutes to share whatever it is that you'd like for us to know. Yep, please.
Good evening.
Hi.
Evening. My name is Terry Ferraro. I'm sixty-eight years old. I still work. Live alone, quiet, simple life with my cats. Now, that changed about a year and a half ago when a couple and their two kids pulled a camper in across from me in our subdivision against our bylaws, subdivision bylaws I have against you.
Where, where do you live?
Uh, between Pekin and Martinsburg in a private subdivision called Sellers Lane.
Sellers?
Sellers Lane Farms.
Off the Dutch Creek Road?
Uh, it's like that off Trainer Lane.
Off Trainer?
Yes. It's a private road, which doesn't get, means the sheriff doesn't drive down a private road. So, these people knew what they were doing. I've got pictures of my concerns with them. I've got to look at this every day. And my main concern, which legalized, is they don't have no septic system. For a year and a half, they've been discharging their sewage out of my camp. Uh, the building permit expired, their sewage permit is almost expired. I've got a whole list of things, their allegations, accusations, but I can get every one of them backed up by other people in the subdivision, because I get along with everybody. If you don't mind me reading some of the things I've lived with for the past year and a half. He's threatened to kill me several times because when the sick sheriff does come out there, he thinks I'm the closest one, so I get the repercussions of everything. He doesn't have a driver's license. He's lost it for ten years, but he's still driving. Toxic fumes from burning at nighttime, always, from his chemistry experiments. He's been locked up many times. Served twenty-two years in prison for them charges. The guard dogs bark constantly. The guard dogs have killed two of my cats when he lets them loose. My tires have been slashed. Gas has been siphoned out of my van. Batteries stolen. Constant activity at nighttime. Both kids had multiple run-ins with the law enforcement, and he has been witness hitting his wife in front of the kids. It's just a few of them that I could think of off the top of my head. And I don't know what to do about it. You know, if it's a private road, I called the sheriff. I called, you know, the building commission. I've called, talked to the health department. I've talked to child protective services. I've talked to the school, but the kid is never in school. They said he's not enrolled in, in East Washington County schools. So, I just can't get no action out of anybody. I don't know, you know, what, what the deal is. I try to get along with everybody, but this guy, I cannot get along with him. He's facing felony battery charges because he attacked two people in my subdivision. And at the same time, he's also facing, driving while suspended, while he's still driving, still driving to this day. He's still facing charges as we speak. Maybe he's going back to prison, I don't know. But he's made my life a living hell. And everybody else around, but I'm fifty feet away from him. I get all the repercussions from him. I'm downwind, so I get all the smell from his chemistry experiments and his sewage. That's, that's my story.
Thank you for sharing. I made a few notes. I think we all hate that you're in this situation that you're in and we can sympathize or empathize with having a neighbor that you don't necessarily agree with or their, their issues. I guess, one of the things that I think about when we hear stories like this is I have to think about it from a plan commission point of view while we're sitting here. And so, what things from the plan commission or the building commission can we, is involved in this? Like, the, you know, parts about, um, the issues with the law enforcement that doesn't have anything to do with our group?
Right.
You know, so, um, I think the things that I heard you talk about was, um, you know, building permit and septic permit and those types of things. So Travis, can you explain a little?
Is there a temporary structure issue in problem? I don't get it.
Yes. There's currently not anything, I guess, then?
But he's dumping his sewage for a year and a half. He's been dumping his waste just out in the ground. It seemed like that would be the most serious incident ever, right?
So that would be the health department, correct?
Yeah, we've got an expired permit from the building department. I've also contacted Jackson County electric to go ahead and move forward to pull the meter. You know, because once this expires after a hundred and eighty days, if, you know, they're not moving into more of a permanent situation, you know, the service can be disconnected. They are not going to disconnect the service. So, something possibly we're going to have to look into.
You said they are not?
Are not. Will not. So, yeah, I don't know about that. But, um, what the county wants to do about that, I'm not really sure. It's kind of out of my hands. Health department would be next with open sewage.
Sewer permit runs out at the end of this, end of the year, I believe, is sewer permit.
Right. So, nothing's being done there. The permit was issued three-three-twenty-two. So, they not made, you know, we're, we're under the understanding at, let's say, three-ten-twenty-two. You know, there will be at least, you know, movement towards a septic permit, septic going in. I don't know why it's taking this long or what has happened. I wasn't aware of it.
But that's what it is to get a septic system, but it not to discharge sewer?
No, I don't know. It's to get a system in, yeah. So, I don't know what's, you know, I don't know, you know, where the, where the health department stands, but, you know. So, I don't know if it's going to go into enforcement with them or not. Um, if it doesn't, we're going to have to do something to step in. But if they can't, actually, it should be the health department now, because if they can't get a septic in, there's going to be no need for another permit. So, it's kind of a standstill with Jackson County electric and the health department. That's where we're at, so, for me.
So, if they don't have, if they're past their a hundred and eighty days for the temporary structure, your recourse is Jackson County RNC and septic? There's not recourse that comes out of your office for the temporary structure?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, you know, we could have got the meter pulled. It's, you know, Jackson County said they're not going to do that. But, you know, we're not going to go ahead with another permit for them. If, in this case, it basically falls back on the health department. Of them moving forward, because they, they haven't even filled this first permit for a system. So, that's where we're at. The, the first permit being a temporary residence permit?
What, what was the date on that?
Three-three-twenty-two.
Three-three-twenty?
Three-three-twenty-two.
Twenty-two, Mark.
Twenty-two, okay. I know you guys don't like speaking on those lines, but...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Ferraro, what's your address?
Eighty-six, eighty-six thirty South Sellers Lane. Address and question is eighty-six fifty-five.
Eighty-six fifty-five.
Yes, sir.
Well, Travis, do we know, I don't think saying bylaws, and I know there's another word for that, that, that like goes on the plat before that subdivision gets built, not an afterthought? Do we know, is it nothing that's on this actual plat that says this?
It sounds to me like, from what Ferraro's explaining, that this is one of those situations where the subdivision was created and adopted and most probably any covenants or restrictions. I don't know, I have what Mr. Ferraro's deed, but most likely the covenants and restrictions are on his deed and not on the plat.
It's on the plat, there's all kinds of restrictions, but since it's private and it's supposed to be a homeowner's association, when it was developed, I think there's no teaching of it anymore.
I would just recommend, just so you know, one way or the other, go talk to Emily and look on the plat and see if there is anything actually written down or if there's nothing there. That's, that would be at least the rubber meat in the road that you've got something to start moving with besides what, you know, is going on with Travis and the health department.
One, disposal, why did, he's continued to dump raw sewage on it? Is an EPA an option? Like I said, I'm out of options now. I, I don't, those... Two weeks ago, during the middle of the drought, the burn man, he always starts a fire whenever he does his dirty work at nighttime. Starts a fire up and then the burn man. I called the sheriff and the sheriff come out just, while he was in the middle of his experiments, the sheriff just said, "Put the fire out." They come out with fire department and then they left. I thought that was going to be a prime opportunity for them to check him out then. It's private property, they don't have a right to get on his property without probable cause, you know. It's a real situation. But usually, I'm just hoping stupidity usually takes care of itself. It's just been a little bit longer than I thought.
Right. Mr. Ferraro, would you care to read your contact information, phone number with Mr. Elliott there? Don't know what we're going to do, but we're going to do something.
I mean, the pictures don't need to adjust, it's just drop eye, take a look. Like, the garbage, the wind, the airliness flows right towards me all the time.
Does he actually own this lot?
No, they're buying it from Indiana Land. Indiana Land has, they have sold it.
You still have the light in front of you. I got my hearing aids turned up as high as I can, so it's my fault.
Since I've lived there, Indiana Land sold it. Five or six different people that don't have two nickels in them, they'll take it back immediately. So evidently, they're making their money, ten cent payment or whatever it is.
Thank you for coming and talking to us because this is pretty relevant because later in the agenda, we're going to talk about temporary structures some more. And so, this gives us a great example of something to consider in keeping our minds as we discuss that. Um, like I said, I don't know that the plan commission direction has anything that we can do, but Todd, Estemashner can work with Travis and the health department to get at least those things that we can, um, work with, like septic permits and the legal permits.
Mr. Ferraro, if, if I give you my word that I will return those pictures, and may I have those a separate or two? You can have them.
Yes, sir.
We'll be in touch with you. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, we'll just keep going down the agenda, I guess. Travis, the building commissioner, do you have any items?
None, yes.
Attorney, John B., do you have any? Do you have any items? It says none, but...
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
If you, if you want me to advance them.
Sure.
I spent a fair amount of time, um, this afternoon trying to find Google Docs in order to review the section five-seventeen, two-point-ten and section... Uh, section five-seventeen point seven, removal. I reviewed the airport overlay ordinance. There are two things regarding that. If a tower is under two-hundred feet in height, it doesn't require any, this is a general statement, doesn't require any FAA approval. It's over that. It would require a separate, um, notification from the FAA. Uh, the airport overlay ordinance basically would impact anything within three to linear miles of the airport. The new runway, not the old runway. So... To the extent that, um... If, if you want to put some distance in here, five miles or three miles in vision. And when someone applies for building permit, Travis automatically has a layer, um, in the GIS system, right? That pops up a notification if somebody's applying for a building permit within that airport overlay zone. That's the big comment that's done, runs all around, running everywhere. So, um, you know, five miles is fine, the way it's written, if you want to quack. Three, you could, um... The other thing...
Jonathan asked you quick about that. So, are you, is the Board of Agent Commissioners only concerned about towers over two-hundred feet within three miles? Or are they concerned any height tower within three miles?
Any tower height within three miles. Now, the, the overlay zone is, is code. And so, depending on where this location is, a hundred feet might be okay without any issue. But if, as you move closer to, to the airport and begin to impact, um, that, uh, clear space area, then may have an effect. So, you could have a tower fifty feet tall, one of the weight and, and be, any, uh, an intrusion into the zone. And have a tower a hundred and fifty feet. That's some vertical length that is not intrusion.
And neither of those towers would need to contact the FAA. The FAA, one of them would need approval for, or both of them would need approval from the airport real estate, even if the FAA is involved.
Yeah, five miles is overkill, three miles is meanwhile. Guess we'll need to note to change that when we have a form next through.
Right.
So, then on, on five-seventeen point five, so the way, the way that is set out in this whole, you have heights there that are, um, significantly under two-hundred feet. Depending on location, again, they may not, um, impact the airport zone. Whatever you want to do with those is, I think, okay. And I think they, they're fine as they are. If you ultimately decide that's what you want to do. Five-seventeen point seven, and that costs one.
Yes, sir.
I'd talk to the county commissioners about that. I brought an example of a tower removal project that was recently completed. And this was just a huge, big old tower that got taken down. And it cost a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars just to drop that tower on the ground. That was a two-minute, fifty-foot tower. That was huge. It's only, but no one local is the AT&T Tower out on Beeline. That total project was, uh, over five-hundred thousand dollars. So... My thought in looking at that, five-seventeen point seven, is probably the easiest way to do that is to require a performance bond on the back end as a part of the permit process. But then the question becomes, there's a, there's a difference in cost depending on, on size. You know, it won't take much to take down a hundred-foot tower if you want to just drop the tower. And it's significantly more costly as you build up in height. So, I, I need to give some thought on it. My, my thinking is the best way to do it is a performance bond. You secure the back end of the permit. You know? But I don't think it's, it's reasonable to ask for cash from those. Nobody's going to put up a hundred thousand, two-hundred... Nobody's going to put up a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars of cash, put it with the county at point zero, zero, ought to, say, interest or something. And then have it sit there for ten or fifteen years, so, um... Performance bonds are, are relatively inexpensive. The last one I priced was like, you know, four dollars a thousand. But I assume that cost comes down with the, and maybe Todd knows better. I assume that cost comes down with the, with, as the amount of bond increases. So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to draft something, suggest this become bonded item and then use some thought to scale. That's my other comment, Daniel.
Okay, to go along with that, um, I had, I know some people in here and I was hoping Kevin would be here tonight to, to share a little bit about it, but the Washington County Farm Bureau hosted a program about solar, developments and contracts. And the attorney who was there that talked, he, um, has a lot of experience with solar contracts. And when he and I were talking before the program, he said one of the, the things that he felt was most, was very important was that for the counties to have solid ordinances, planning and zoning, and that that would be, um, you know, very helpful to, um, those landowners who are thinking about or who are in these contracts for solar development. And so I had asked him to share with me some of those ordinances that he thought were especially good and, um, some of those performance type bonds were included in those. But, um, he was on vacation, so he hasn't sent me those things, but I told him that our next meeting was the first of December, so he's supposed to get that to me then. So hopefully, um, we can have some good examples of ones that he's worked with. Not necessarily going to be exactly for telecommunications, but we can...
Yeah. Where is, where's he from, Indy?
Yeah, um, his name was Jeffrey Rainbow, and he was from the, um, oh, like, I can't even think, like Green Castle, Green, something, near Indianapolis. But he has worked with a lot of different, um, property owners who are getting into contracts with solar, so...
Green Road Dolls?
I don't know. I didn't bring his card, I have it in my office.
You guys contacted the commissioner?
Yes, of course, yes.
Really, what he was talking about is basically the same thing John just mentioned about this old AT&amp;T tower. Is, it's kind of an abandonment issue, there has to be a, if you want to call it, an exit plan. In other words, after, of course, that thing's been there 50 years, exit. But irregardless, you know, there needs to be a plan in place or some rules where somebody doesn't get stuck with a big, big bill, that somebody, you know, could be, could be municipality and could have been to the airport or could be the county or, um... So, yeah, his, his information would be very helpful because I'm sure some of the same rules apply. I'm sure they have a plan for someday, you know, those solar fields, uh, you know, they're not going to be around forever, there'll be new technology and they'll probably be obsolete in 30 years or 40 and can't just let them sit there.
John, on the screen up there is his information. I don't know if you know him.
He can't see it.
He can't see it, okay. Well, his, his business is in Indianapolis, he's stoned area, so...
When you add the, it's hard to, you know, the...
Okay.
You don't have to do it right now.
Sure. I thought he was very helpful, um, and had a pretty good understanding about planning commissions and also ordinances, so, very good. Any other items, John, for you?
No, I don't think so.
All right, um, the next item was membership information and findings. I don't know exactly everything that Emily was going to share. I have a lot of papers up here, but I don't see, um, exactly what that is. But I do know that, um, wanted to, um, address that and thank him for coming to the meeting uh, last month and sharing your, um, understanding of the ordinances and everything that you shared about membership on the board. And we definitely, as a commission, appreciate when people take an interest in what we're doing and we know that you do that, and we want people to come and talk to us. And so thank you for doing that and, um, gave a lot of things to think about. Um, after talking with legal counsel and, you know, reviewing those same documents that you shared with us, um, I believe that, I speak for the commission when we say that we feel, believe that, um, we are working within the guise of those, um, documents and, um, are, uh, completely supportive of the, the members that we have on the planning commission. And they, uh, one of the things, and I should have pulled it out, is that we talk, it talks about in, in there about the people being selected based upon their specialties, their knowledge, their expertise, things like that. And I think that, um, the board has done, or the commission has done a good job of finding people who have special interests and things that can specifically assist the, the planning commission. So with that, um, we appreciate it, thank you very much, um, for bringing that to our attention. I don't, for that item, I don't know of anything, um, else other than, um, Emily has mentioned in one of her notes that it is time to be thinking about whether or not members want to continue on the planning commission, so, um, if there is an appointment that's going to need to be made or anything like that, we want to get that to the commissioners or whoever so that we're ready to go in January, so I think that was something that might have been mentioned last time. So, uh, if a member is going off of the planning mission, we need to be getting that taken care of so that we can get an appointment. Was there anything else that anybody knew about that item on the agenda? Next is the removal of the Health Department code, Travis Townsend, or, or somebody else knew more about this than I do?
This, this kind of, well, I became aware of it this afternoon. It's a, another new state law, um, I've not even, I've not read it, I've just heard this secondhand from a little bit from Travis and then Chris Bowling, and the goal naturally is to make sure that whatever rules the county establishes, that, you know, they're consistent and, uh, there isn't one rule at the Building Department that contradicts the Health Department. So that being said, um, Travis and I talked a little bit and there's absolutely no reason to change the one acre, uh, lot size limit, minimum, minimum size. And it's a three quarters of an acre if there's no well. And this is what Chris Bowling recommended. Uh, the state has given us the permission or latitude to make this smaller if we would like, and I haven't read it yet, so I guess it's going to take effect next year, but we'd probably need to make a county ordinance that just simply states the minimum lot size requirements. That way it would be a blanket rule for the Health Department and the Building Commission. So we're going to do a little research and, uh, come up with, probably come up with an ordinance that's everyone's agreeable to actually make sense. So I guess I'm telling them we'll table it for next month. And, and all this body would do would be give a recommendation to the commissioners based on input of Travis and the Health Department. So there would be no vote or anything, because we're not changing anything, we're just going to make it official in writing as a county ordinance so the state can't come along and tell us, um, so, so can put a subject system on a lot that's a quarter of an acre, when the latter field requires more room than next.
So that's something that'll go into our planning ordinances or they go into...
Yeah, it, it will eventually make its way there, but if there won't be any changes, it'll be business issue as far as the lot size. And then, right, Travis?
Correct, yeah.
Travis, are these lots, they're all lots that do not pertain to a subdivision?
Right, this is outside subdivision.
Subdivision's two acres.
Equal to two.
So any, so any parcel to be sold has to be greater than three acres?
Three quarters, yeah, three quarters and an acre, yeah. Three quarters for city water, acre for well. We're just going to, yeah, we're just going to make that our standard because it's getting dropped out of, you know, the Health Department's requirements for some reason at state level, so if we're going to go ahead and continue what we're doing, we're just going to have to have that in our ordinance system.
Do, do you think there's any reason to, that this would affect those two acres in the subdivision?
No.
And that's what they said.
Yeah, that's not having to do with it, yeah, it'd be good there. It's just all the outlawed properties outside subdivision.
And so Travis, you and Todd are going to work on that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we'll be good.
Daniel bring it and we'll talk about it next time.
Yes, yep.
Does anyone, the next thing on the agenda is the telecommunications facilities, the section five seventeen. John has shared a bunch about that, we appreciate your work job, thank you. We can't make any decisions tonight, obviously, but if somebody wants to make a comment or add anything to what John has so that it can be in the, the notes from the meeting?
I'll try to bring some suggestive language next meeting.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, and then section five eighteen, temporary uses. We can discuss or we can, um, save that for when we have, um, quorum so that we can make decisions. What would the commission like to do? I know my preference is not to talk about something that I'm going to have to talk about again, but that's, that's my, just my opinion.
That means then I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I don't even need you to do that, we're just going to leave because we don't have to take a vote.
That's right.
So if there's not anything else that needs to come before us, I just don't want to be bossy. I get accused of that all the time, so I'm trying to not be bossy.
Talking about anyone in particular?
Oh, everyone.
You don't want to vote for that?
No, we don't have, we can't vote. So the meeting is, do you like to bring your business, I am now during the meeting? That's exactly right.
Let's move over to the other table.
That's what I did, I declared the meeting over.